Glenwood, Arkansas, Special City Council Meeting, July 12th, 2024.
All right, get the crowd you got out here today. Uh, roll call.
Jimmy?
Here.
Alan?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
All right, Alan, you listen to what I'm saying.
Alan, you're up there. Jesus, thank you for your goodness and kindness to us, oh, you've been so good to our town. You've been good to us intimately. We appreciate you helping us do your business.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
I just wanted to go down.
Uh, I want to do a little introduction here before we get started. I was last being, forgot to do it. We have a new owner of the Glenwood Herald sitting here with us. Would y'all stand up and introduce yourself with this new owner? This is y'all's second copy you'll put out, right?
Yeah, we put out the second one this week. I've met some of y'all, uh, as good as the ones we had now. I'm Dwayne Holloway, this is my wife, Gail Pitts. Uh, we, we've owned the Montgomery County News since 2019. I've been up there since 2013. We moved to Glenwood last August. And when Mike Wallace announced he was going to retire, and they were trying to figure out what to do with the paper, I said, well, we need to own our, our hometown newspaper. This is our hometown now. So we, that's all worked out and had to jump in a little sooner than we wanted to, so, but, uh, we, we thank y'all and thank you for letting us introduce ourselves. Anything we can do, y'all do whatever.
All right.
That stuff makes us look good.
I tell you like I do to kids at school, when you do things, it's worth writing about.
All right. That written made, mark the quarter treasurer. Johnny Cox, quarter treasurer or councilman?
Councilman.
Kayla Golden?
Kayla.
Jason Linderman, quarter treasurer. We have one application for, uh, councilman. Johnny, uh, I know who you are, what you're doing. I'll pass this around, let the council read it. Why don't you tell us a little bit about you, so everybody knows, see you are what you are.
Well, I'm Johnny Cox, I'm fifty-two years old, obviously reside out here in Glenwood. Married and my wife here, we've been married thirty-one years. Got five children, three grandchildren. I'm in the oil and gas industry, had business nineteen ninety, that's all I've ever done. Retired from Maripan Oil Company, uh, in two thousand and nineteen, and started a, I'm a, currently a partner in the start of oil and gas firm on the Dallas Fort Worth.
Okay. You pretty much explained his resume, if we want to read y'all out loud, we can, we'll pass it around, or... That is the only council person we have. Do y'all want to address the council position first, that way they can, once you get them in, they can do the quarter treasurer. All this. Sir?
Give us a couple minutes.
Yes, sir, they'll look at it that way, y'all may have some questions.
We're just like, she goes to the box.
Okay.
She should be through. That was going to take. We should be telling her.
I need to tell Karen something. What are you supposed to be doing? Sales. Sales. I need to check your. I want to look at the background.
No.
Building town is, this is long to be until, be two years and six months, roughly.
Two years and six months, this position will be, yes. The recorder treasurer will run again in November, as will, uh, Alan and Jimmy's positions are up in November, and then Chris's and...
Please hold your applause.
Chris's, Chris's position and this position that we're appointing, and the mayor will be in the next election.
I'm gonna make a motion, we appoint Mr. Cox to the position.
You have a second?
Second.
Now, Mr. Moore?
Moore, second, okay.
Roll call.
Yes, Chris?
Yes.
Yes.
Y'all need to press the, really get some more in.
We need to read the resolution.
Uh... Get over there.
How do you spell your name?
J O H, N N Y. C O X.
I knew the other one, but I didn't know how to spell it.
You're on your brother, right?
I don't even need to mail your paycheck, dude.
It's still on there, I didn't change that.
It's free.
It's free. But I can't tell you why. You're trying to, two years and two. Okay, who wants to read it?
Don't even read it. They're hilarious. I don't care. Resolution number twenty-four oh seven, be resolved by the town of Glenwood, State of Arkansas. Resolution entitled, Councilman North Two, seat vacancy fulfillment, per written letter submitted on five thirty-one twenty-four. Oh wait, oh wait. Karen Brady resigned their position as council, North Two, upon the town, of the town of Glenwood, during this regular season, session on July twelve, twenty twenty-four. Appointed Johnny Cox by three votes to zero, or, no, it's four votes, or thirty-three, thirty-two, to fill the seat until such as time is filled during the regular election, two years and six months position. Be it further resolved at City Council Glenwood hereby, whereas all in favor of the above resolution, this resolution dated today, approved by the mayor.
That was most, it's a resolution twenty-four oh seven.
I'll make it.
Do you get a second?
Yes, I don't.
Roll call.
Alan?
Yes. Chris? Yes.
Yes.
You have another one?
I have another one. I'm gonna have to get three. I'll get three for them.
We're waiting on Johnny to get here, so before we go for these other, uh, then we'll swear him in, get him up here, so he can start voting, but let's get...
On the treasure, you, we have the ones on the treasure?
There's three. Johnny, y'all come on up here and we'll...
He didn't follow it up, Billy.
He shouldn't be here in this second before he in. We can go ahead and, we've got three for, uh, the quarter treasurer.
Welcome.
Hey, Johnny, you, so will this let him?
Hey, welcome, Johnny.
Thanks, sir.
Sorry, my deepest condolences.
Let me get this finished.
Guys, I've been here earlier, I thought the job'd be shut down.
Bring the bill, that's where you're at.
I thought we had this fixed last Friday in Tills. Well, I didn't expect you to be setting these standards, but I didn't probably get over here so early. Hey, where do you want, press guy, where do you want us to sit? Just where y'all want it. Well, let's get over here and get there. Come over here, let, even something in the paper, I'm sure. They don't care about being... You ready?
You want to... Just she wants to know.
Okay.
I state your name. This parliament swear of the law and firm and support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Arkansas, and I will faithfully discharge the duty of the office of councilmember, North Ward District Two, upon which I am about to enter, the term begins the twelfth of July, and ends on the twelfth and the thirty-first. Congratulations, Johnny. I'm sorry, guys, I'd have been here on time, but after last, last week, if we had people work together for Glenwood, as hard as they worked against Glenwood, no telling what people could do in this town.
Well, that's how you already said.
That was a nice way of saying it.
What'd you say? I didn't remember.
These are my copies sent up to the council. I opened the letter just then, he's gonna go make copies, so council can have a copy on the front.
Do the job. I don't got, I've got other jobs.
All right.
Are we turning the other one?
Yeah. Uh, we make a set of copies for...
Put your names.
I got it. Counsel, while they're bringing it in, if y'all are interested, this is the one, at the water plant, all the emitters we had put in, three months ago, started pouring oil.
It's under warranty.
It's under warranty. The other motor we had sent off to get it in, the other motor was sent off, having been back here third, it's being put on this street, and that motor's going back to the factory. So I guess it's a good thing they got a spare motor for that, for the pump, because we're sure...
Well, put a zipper on that thing.
I don't know what's on it. We just have to know, y'all saw me open, be with me to copy, so the council will have a copy of it. We have three people applying for recorder treasurer, uh, Kayla Golden, Jason Linderman, and Norman Lowery. How would y'all, council, how would you like to approve, go on, you'll tell me what you want to do, you've got three people.
What I would like for us to do is, if it's okay, if not out of order or anything, to let them stand up, tell a little bit about yourself, uh, make a motion, go on executive session, discuss on, discuss these, and then come back out and take whatever action you probably believe you need to take regarding the county. Does that sound okay?
Hey, you want to go, you know, each of the councils to stand up?
If that's okay, not out of order or anything.
Hey, look over, you're up first again.
My name is Taylor Golden, um, I'm from Phillip, uh, we moved to Glenwood about a month ago. We've been coming here for vacation the last few years, and we love it so much, we said, let's make it home. So, I think I love it so much, doing it out here, and a better community, better the town. Um, been in the medical field the last ten years, it's all been a burn, so, basic conflict, very good with it, very good at conversation and conversation, so, very good with that.
Sir?
I agree.
Thank you.
Sir? Uh, Jason Linderman?
I'm Jason Linderman, uh, married to Tara, Linda, formerly Tara Pageant, uh, lived here in Glenwood for eleven years now, from, directly out of the story area, I'm CPA here in town, um, also have another business in Nashville, Arkansas. Just, uh, looking to help break in.
Norman Lowery?
I'm Norma Lowery, uh, born and raised in Glenwood, um, you know, Jared Lowery, have one son, Jason, doing the paramedic, have one grandson, who has five apple in my eye. Uh, I was in education for twenty-two years, I was tired. Before that, I was a secretary for a wrecking company in Malvern, and I was a secretary for Bruce Dibble, here in Glenwood, um, and I decided to get to the church. I understand the workings of the city government, because I've been to a lot of meetings, and I've been on some committees. I love Glenwood, I only want the best for Glenwood. Um, I do understand the job, I understand I record during the meeting, I understand that I do not have a voice in the meeting, unless I am asked. I do understand about, uh, what I'm supposed to do for recorder, I do know rules of order, I taught oral communication for twenty-two years. I just want the best for Glenwood, and if you give me the opportunity, I will do my best.
Somebody watch the floor, six in session.
I'll second that.
What do you want? Yeah, roll call.
Alan?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Four seven days.
What time is it?
Four seven three. I need a motion to go out of executive session?
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
Roll call?
Alan?
Here.
Chris?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh... Is there a motion to go forward, guys?
I'm gonna make a motion.
I'll say that way, because I can't vote yet. We've got three good people applying for this job. This is highly unusual for Glenwood. I don't have a vote in, but any one of the three of you people are super good, and have got Glenwood interest at heart, and I'm proud to see it. I don't have to vote this, but I will say, thank you for applying, and keep trying to have a new city whoever gets this nominated.
There's other things that open up, I'm gonna say also, that kind of time, we're absolutely desperate for someone to step forward, so, uh, keep that in mind also.
Sir?
You? I make a motion to, Jason, please, please, say your word, then.
I think Jimmy might want to, uh, you know, you didn't hear my...
Jay, Jay, over here, you got a trouble, huh?
Okay.
You have a second?
One second.
Roll call?
Jimmy?
Yes.
Johnny? Alan?
Epstein?
Epstein? And?
Who?
I eat breakfast from Jason, a lot.
Yes.
What?
I said I eat real breakfast from Jason, a lot.
Do everyone want to?
One very good one. And for those of you who don't know, uh, all the city minutes, go online, glenwood AR dot com, all the city records are there. We have all the current minutes in, dropped down, except for the days, we've been like two years, we've gone back ten years, and some pretty information, quicker than it gets handed in, and standard ordinances and resolutions that are in with the minutes as they go back, and when they get to ten years, back on the minutes with ordinance and resolutions, and I'm gonna get them to pick up, all the minutes, all the ordinances and resolutions will be added to the city records, they're not all there yet, the public, they're here for public, but they're not online for public. All the pump operations, all the DMR, all the plants are running, glenwood AR dot com, if you want to go back and fill in city, Glenwood, go on there and pick what you want to know, because we're, we're loading information on it every day. We've got that website back up working, and it is, we're struggling to get information to it as quickly as we can.
Address, yeah, S O N, W E N D E R, you know, I can't, I have to get this right, just this back.
But this is the oak.
Yeah, you need that.
Resolution number twenty-four oh eight, be resolved by the town of Glenwood, State of Arkansas, has a resolution entitled, Treasury Recorder, seat vacancy fulfillment, per written letter submitted by Ryan Brady, five thirty-one twenty-four. Ryan Brady resigned their position as Treasury Recorder of the town of Glenwood, during the regular session on seven twelve twenty-four. Appointed Jason Linderman by three S, one of staying, vote to fill the seat, seven twelve twenty-four to twelve thirty-one twenty-four. Until such time as an office is filled during regular election, be it further resolved at the City Council of Glenwood, Arkansas hereby, we're all in favor of the above resolution. Resolution adopted on regular session date of the day.
You have a motion to attempt resolution twenty-four oh eight?
I'll make it, motion.
Alan, second?
Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Yes, I'm trying to figure out the birthday option.
Johnny?
End it.
Sixty-seven. Now, I'll ask you where you want me to get.
Wherever you want to get it.
Okay. Let's see here. Where, where's that been good from here by her, and that way, that way I'm not doing just something, I should have done this while ago. Now everybody's running. Uh, Jason Linderman?
Uh, Jason Linderman.
To solids, where that I'll support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Arkansas, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the state of the office of Treasury Recorder, upon which I am about to enter, term begins on the twelfth and the seventh and the twelfth, ends the twelfth and the thirty-first. Congratulations, you're getting into mass.
You're very happy to see, looky here, Jason, what's this done? Looky here. Y'all got a page?
Yes. Thank you.
Bye, guys. I just can't stand the good part, but I'll help you.
You got extra reasons.
I'll be when you need me next time.
You want her pitch minutes, since she's not abused, they have a big one. All right. With the change, like we've had, we've got to get new signature cards, uh, there's a couple of things I suggest the council change when we're doing this. I would like to see you require two signatures to go to safety deposit box, uh, make sure things are getting put back in, let's get taken out.
I might make a motion right now.
Okay, requiring two signatures, safety deposit box.
I'll second that.
Your second? Okay.
Yeah.
Johnny?
Yes.
Okay, now then, we need to remove the Brady's off of all of our accounts, we'll need to add Jason and, uh, Johnny to all of our accounts. Do I need to read all these account numbers in the minutes, or just attach them?
Can y'all just list everybody that we're gonna put on the counts, the bank, like that?
The three, the three pages you have in front of you are all of our accounts at all the banks, with all their account numbers, that's got to have signatures on it. So, do we need to, do we, do we need to read all these account numbers, or just say attached? Okay, everybody has the list of all of the accounts at all the banks, and all the CDs at all the banks in front of them. And y'all need, right now, you were putting everybody on the other thing for signature, that's all four councilmen, the quarter treasurer, and the mayor. If that's what y'all want to do now, we need to vote first to take off...
I'm gonna say make a motion to remove the Brady's from all accounts.
I'll second that.
And CDs.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Johnny? Alan? Chris?
Yes.
Now, please pick up, because it's being recorded, if people look at this online, they need to hear your answers, so if you're not speaking loud enough, please do so. The one thing I did not know, that I've learned, as we've been buying a lot of CDs this year, our CDs, some of them came cash with one signature, and I think that's a good thing. I would entertain a motion that all CDs and all accounts require at least two signatures.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Alan?
Hi.
Chris?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
I can't believe they ain't already finished it.
And I'm gonna go make the, I mean, we know it's like, you know, that needs to be the new account.
The new account, yeah.
I'll make a motion, we need to add, we need to put all four councilmen, Chris Lowery, Alan, or Jimmy, Johnny, or Jason, and the mayor. I'll make sure they're on all CDs and all accounts.
And the accounts, the accounts that we're voting on will be, the three sheets that are attached to y'all, that are all the accounts that have all...
Just so that any count, Brandon, you can sign it.
Except the court.
Yes. Except the court.
If it has to be, chief?
Yes, the mayor.
No, our attorney and my sister.
Do we need, we don't need to change that, because you're there, that's our, nothing's changing, yeah. This would exclude the, uh, court records.
The court receipt.
Court receipt.
The rest of the court. Will be y'all on.
That way, there's four, there's five, there's six, there's seven, there's eight, there's nine, there's ten, just across the room. I'll second that.
Motion is served.
Alan? Uh, Chris?
Yes.
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 And then hopefully they can add it to the next council meeting outside.
Let me ask a question, uh, how can we do these minutes, so we can get this proceeding, because the banks won't proceed without them.
Well, then, we should start it, but she won't.
Billy, can we run it out, just type the minutes up from this way, you let Jason start fresh on the next meeting, and then, uh...
Yeah, but what I'm trying to do is figure out, without having to call another meeting, so we can get this done. Is there a way that I get the council to sign those minutes without having a city council meeting and approve it at the council meeting? So the bank can start the paperwork? The bank can't start the paperwork till we get the signed minutes, right?
We don't need to approve a minute, so I can write it in.
Well, y'all read them and approve them. Is there a way that we could do that without a council meeting?
Jack, if we, if the city, if I make a motion, that the following entities are, are people are on the signature cards, and it's seconded and it's voted on, or whatever, is that not all that a bank would have to have, or they need?
They need to have a proof. They have a proof.
Right, what I'm saying is, if we're not approved of that, that resolution...
I think, I think the end time is going to be starting.
Uh, lots of things for resolution.
Long they gotta pop the demands for they're not signing, you don't have to give them ready to be signed.
Okay.
But then you can't sign it until they get an actual signed copy of the minutes.
That's why it's always two in one.
A resolution, Jackson, you can do a resolution.
We can do a resolution, the bank would accept a resolution.
Yes.
Or the main, either way.
We could do a resolution today, though, right? We could sign a resolution today, you just have to go back and out.
But it's not approved until y'all...
It would be approved if we approved it, right?
Hey, you know what? We've been made it, just like we have been, let's just, let's just do it.
Better take it to the bank and let them start it, and then they may need to come to council meeting, and we can approve the minutes, and then we can turn around and sign our bank.
Yeah, maybe we should come down.
We should do it. There's gonna be a lot of...
It's a mess.
She may not have her ready tomorrow, but at least it's done. Yeah.
All the, all the resolution, you got a resolution.
No, we just want a resolution.
Okay.
Yes.
Did you get the mo, you did get the motion, you told us to get it through. Make the motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, I need...